All right. Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022 to order. At this time, we'll have a mode of silence for whatever particular issues you're thinking about. Thank you. So at this time, I'll ask Boy Scout Cooper Ellsworth of Troop 89 to come up here and assist Alderman Gripp and us in the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll ask him to come up, and then we'll do this. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cooper. Appreciate your service and doing what you do. Thanks for being here. City Clerk Brian, if you please read the roll. Call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ortes.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. All right, again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. Again, like to welcome everyone in attendance and those reviewing the meeting on any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind, as you talk to the council, you also are sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a greater place for everyone. For especially the folks in here, if you have an electronic device, I'd ask you to please put it on silent or turn it off, simply that it doesn't get in the way of somebody talking. If you want to address the council on any specific item, or at the end with public business, please, when you're called, please come to the podium. We'd love to know your name, address, or warden. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please remember to talk to the council as a body and not to any one individual. Please keep your remarks to five minutes, and we'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator Spiegel, any update for us this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Okay, we have seven public hearings this evening, three in community development and three for Public Works and one in Finance. So, Community Development, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will lead those discussions. Alderman Gripp, please.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. I open up the public hearings for Community Development. Public hearing number one is for case ROW 22-01, being the request of Seven Hills Paving LLC to vacate unimproved right-of-way south of East 59th Street and west of Tremont Avenue. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number two is on amending the urban renewal plan for the north urban renewal area. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing on considering approving an economic development agreement with PB Liner USA. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will lead that discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the first public hearing on considering the approval for the Electric Easement and Electric Vehicle Charging Equipment Agreement with Mid-American Energy at the River Center Parking Ramp. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the contract milling program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. And I open the third and final public hearing on the specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the root control program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And this public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The next area is Finance. There's one public hearing. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will lead that. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I hereby open the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2023 maximum property tax levy rate and amount. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Condon. So, next area is petition in communication. Councilmembers and mayors. Let's see, I see one. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Corey, Administrator Spiegel. As we talked, could you give us an update on the RFQ for the destination playground and how the onsite tour went?
Sure. So, as I mentioned a little bit, that is related to Main Street Landing. So, the RFQ is out right now for that particular project, the play structure area. We had more than 30 vendors download their request for qualifications, and more than 20 actually participate in the site visit here in the community last week, ranging from places as far away as Boston, with obviously lots of interest here in the Midwest in a variety of disciplines. So, we will continue going through the selection process as outlined in RFQ.
And what's the schedule, please?
I didn't bring it down with me, but I can look it up and get it to you.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more. But I'll wait. Okay. Could you give us an update on the Crime Task Force? Yeah. I'm sorry, Your Honor.
Just, thank you, Alderwoman Lee. So, update on Crime Task Force. So, we had a meeting recently, probably our last organized one. We agreed to meet about every quarter just to discuss other issues, but the consensus from the group, moving forward, as the council's already moving and as the staff is already moving, is to concentrate on working on the group violence interventions. We had a lot of discussion about other things, but that's where they settled on supporting with the discussion to go further. So, as you guys have done, as the budget is allowing, the task force is in support of that, and that's the issue they want to concentrate on now. So, I appreciate your asking. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, we'll move on. We have four action areas of discussion. Community Development, Public Safety, Public Works, and Finance. Community Development will be the first area. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance for case ROW 22-01, being the request of Seven Hills Paving LLC to vacate unimproved right-of-way south of East 59th Street and west of Tremont Avenue. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this agenda item? Does anyone from the council wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution amending the urban renewal plan for the north urban renewal area. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Does anyone from the council wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Number three is a resolution approving an economic development agreement with PB Liner USA. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving case F22-01, being the request of CNL Plaza LLC for a final plat of Katie's Eastern Avenue addition, 45-lot subdivision on 19.26 acres located north of East 58th Street and east of Eastern Avenue. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? I will just say that I'm excited for this project to get underway, hopefully in 2022, but this is more really good, single-family housing in northeast Davenport. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. And I'd also like to add that the Stormwater Detention Pond here was recently upgraded, working with the developer and Public Works, and it's really quite a beautiful pond now, and it will serve the existing developments as well as this new one. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. And our final item, item number five, is a resolution of support of the Hilltop Campus Village and Iowa Main Street Organization. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from the council? All right. I will just say, I'm glad to continue support of the Hilltop and all their endeavors as one of the good, strong neighborhood districts that we have in the city commercially, and you guys do a great job in the Hilltop leveraging the support that you get from the city, and we just look forward to a continued partnership in the coming year. So, Alderwoman Lee, would you please set our agenda?
I move, thank you, I move that all five items be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That concludes Community Development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next area is Public Safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman will lead that discussion. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item under Public Safety is a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule I of Chapter 10.96 entitled Snow Routes by adding Dougalby Street between Locust Street and Jersey Ridge Road. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, I'll read all components and then ask for comment. Is a resolution approving street lane or public ground closures on the listed dates and times to hold outdoor events. First, Corn Belt Running Club, Chili Chase, four-mile run-walk, Sunday, February 27th, 2022, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. closures. Only one lane will be closed and traffic will be allowed to cross when safe to do so on East Pleasant Street from Fernwood Avenue to Forest Road, Forest Road from East Pleasant Street to East George Washington Boulevard, East George Washington Boulevard from Forest Road to Jersey Ridge Road, excuse me. Next, Center for Active Seniors Incorporated, St. Patrick's Day Race Downtown, Saturday, March 12th, 2022. Closures, 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Second Street from Harrison to Brady, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Second Street from Harrison to Ripley, 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., two westernmost travel lanes and parking lane on Brady from Second to Third Street, 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Third Street from Brady to Gaines, 9:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Third Street from Gaines to Division, 9:50 a.m. to 10:10 a.m., all lanes of Brady from River to Third. Next, St. Patrick's Society Grand Parade, 36, Downtown, Saturday, March 12th, 2022, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Closures, Gaines Street from the Centennial Bridge to Third Street, Third Street from Gaines Street to River Center, where the parade dispands. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that I will move on. Item number three, again, I'll read all components before asking for comment, is a motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates and times. Danview Inn, St. Patrick's Day Party, 410 East Second Street, 8:00 a.m. Saturday, March 12th, 2022, to 12:00 a.m. Sunday, March 13th, 2022, outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, St. Patrick's Society Grand Parade, 36, Downtown, Saturday, March 12th, 2022, 12:00 p.m. to 1:30 p.m., outdoor music performances over 50 dB. And lastly, Mississippi Valley Fair Incorporated, 2815 West Locust Street, various dates and times, April through November 2022, outdoor events slash music over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. And the last item is, oop, excuse me, I'm sorry. Sorry. Alderwoman Lee.
Does anybody know? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment on that item before I move on? All right. And so then, now the last item, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. These are all annual license renewals, which I do not read. They're listed there for your review. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Alderman Kelly.
I want to ask Chief Sikorsky if he could enlighten me a little bit on Brady Mart, like the calls that you guys have had to the property, and any major issues that's going on with Brady Mart.
So, Paul Sikorsky, your police chief. I haven't run calls for service, but I can certainly do that to you and forward them to you. We have had some incidents at that location and in the area of that location over the recent past.
Well, I just have concerns because that's my neighborhood. So, you know, and I try to pay attention to a lot of that stuff. So, I just was wondering if we had any, something to enlighten me a little bit more, so I can be like, yes, you know, but as of right now, I'm like, hmm.
Yeah, we certainly can put together the statistics for you and send a report to you, absolutely. You bet.
Anyone else? All right, we'll look to leave that item on discussion maybe. Then, before I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move to place all items on consent except for the item mentioned by Alderman Kelly.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That closes Public Safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman. The next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will talk about those. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution approving an electric easement and electric vehicle charging equipment agreement with Mid-American Energy at the River Center Parking Ramp. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the contract milling program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the root control program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding a contract for the Division Street Reconstruction, 76th Street to I-80 Bridge and I-80 Bridge to Sterlite Access Road Project. Is there anyone from the public? No, they're finished. KE Flatwork of Eldridge, Iowa, in the amount of $1,828,148. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding the contract for the CDBG Group Two, East Seventh Street and Leclerc Street Reconstruction Project, the Langman Construction, in the amount of $1,034,690.50. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding the contract for the CDBG Alley Program, 1310 Kirkwood to 1818 Esplanade Reconstruction Project to Emery Construction Group, in the amount of $286,936.71. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a motion approving the contract for the CDBG Alley Rehab, 701 Tremont Avenue to 923 East Sixth Street Project to Emery Construction, in the amount of $94,222. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a motion determining property tax values for the 2022 50/50 cost share Stream Bank Stabilization Project at West 62nd Street and North Elmwood Avenue. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a motion approving change order number two to Tricon General Construction, in the amount of $70,224 for the Modern Women Park Flood Wall Extension and Workout Room Edition Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And finally, item number 10 is a motion awarding a three-year contract for the Low Voltage Electrical Repair Service to Tri-City Electric Company of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend that all items on discussion are set for consent.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that will conclude Public Works for this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The next area, last area is Finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have seven items on Finance this evening. The first item is a first consideration ordinance providing for the sale and issuance of $38,690,000 general obligation corporate and refunding bonds, Series 2022A, and for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Is there anyone from the public, well, and may I note, staff recommends suspension of the rules and passage of second and third considerations for this item. And now, may I ask, is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? That item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration ordinance amending Chapters 13.16.107A and 13.16.107B entitled sanitary sewer rates amount from $5.45 to $5.72 to $6.1 cents to $6.31 per 100 cubic feet of water use, as determined by water meter readings, and amending per bill rates for monthly commercial bills from $20.80 to $21.84 to $22.93 to $24.8, and amending per bill rates for the monthly residential bills from $20.97 to $11.96 to $12.45 to $12.96, and per bill rates for the quarterly residential bills from $28.47 to $29.87 to $31.34 to $32.88, and quarterly commercial bills from $27.97 to $29.37 to $30.84 to $32.38. I apologize for any time I ever made fun of you for reading race routes, because that's really tricky. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? That item will move on. Item number three is a first consideration ordinance amending Chapters 2.36, 2.42, and 2.90 to change the geographic area in which civil service employees may live and to include part of Illinois. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Gripp? Sorry? Item number three.
All right. So, thank you. I asked some questions yesterday, and I've got to be honest, I, this one's always been a big deal for me. We've dealt with this many times. It's always the request to open up the area, and I've always, I've always been opposed to it. I'm a big skin in the game. I wished all of our employees lived in the city of Davenport. I think, I just think it's important, and so I've always hesitated to lift the restrictions on this. Now, the way I understand it is, in Public Safety, specifically in the Police Department, we're having a hard time, as is every other police department in the country, attracting and retaining. And so, we want to do better at that. So, my pause is, I don't think we're having that issue in our other departments. I think the city of Davenport is looked as a favorable place. When we're, when we're out hiring, we do get high-quality applicants and a lot of applicants for our jobs, and I understand what the staff's position is, which is, we shouldn't be creating different classes of employees with the city if we shouldn't have to. So, if you do it for one department, you should do it for all departments. And I am currently just wrestling with the, with the idea of, I understand the need in one department, and I don't understand, I don't think there is a need in the other departments. And so, voting for it for all of civil service when it's not necessarily, it's not necessary, is just my thoughts. Haven't made a decision. Wanted to just bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lee.
Mine isn't quite as important as that one, but if I could go back to number two, I think I see a typo on the monthly residential bills. It says from 2097 to 1196.
Mallory Merritt, CFO. I appreciate the question. This did come up as part of the sewer rate study that was done by PFM. One of the things that they identified is that the monthly rate was significantly higher than what was being charged on a quarterly rate. So, there was a recommendation from them to start to bring that monthly rate into alignment with what's being charged quarterly. So, that's why you see the decrease there.
So, that's correct, then?
It is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And jumping back to item number three, I'll just quickly add that similarly, I am, oh, well, I will just go ahead. I'm similarly wrestling with item number three. I appreciate that if I was in someone else's shoes, I might see things differently, but when I'm on the council, the principled stance that I take is, it's just different. When you, like Alderman Gripp said, have skin in the game, it's a much different feeling as we all pull together in the same direction for the benefit of the city. So, that's, that's my personal consideration there. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. I also, you know, have questions about this, and right now, we permit employees to live in Scott County and a little bit of Muscatine County, I think, for fire and police. Is that correct? Do I have that correct? So, already, we are not requiring employees to live in the city of Davenport. Of course, I think all our wishes, or my wish, would be that that would be a requirement of, of living, you know, working for the city, was, would be to live in the city, but that ship seemed to have sailed probably many decades ago. I don't know. I think it's been like this for a long time. So, I do, I do understand what my colleagues are saying. I do question, though, if we can allow, you know, we will allow right now someone to live at the border of Scott County, but not a mile across the river in Rock Island, or two miles down the road in Moline. And so, would I rather have someone a mile away from the city hall, or 20 miles away from city hall? That's not what we're asking right now. And so, you know, I just, that's what I struggle with here, is, you know, what are we, you know, if we are a bi-state area, and we've already sort of opened these gates, then why not look to another state, people who are close by, who, you know, I know from my time at, when I was with a television station, that, you know, people do travel across the river to do different things. So, I'm not saying I am totally for this, but I think we need to think about that people right now live a great distance from the city. And again, we all have our thoughts about that, and I certainly wish everybody would live here, but there may be some great people, great families. I think we're a wonderful city, and, and it would be wonderful, and this is not going to be part of this, but to be able to have some sort of a program that incentivizes people to live in the city of Davenport as a benefit, which I think would be completely legal. That's another, that's another order of business, but I do understand where my colleagues are coming from, but it's, people living in some of these cities would be closer than where people are living right now. So, just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I initially had, you know, kind of protectionist views on this, you know, before, you know, really kind of digging down in and have since changed, you know, my opinion on this matter, and definitely in favor of this ordinance, ordinance change, you know, if there's something we can do to, you know, easily do to attract and retain police officers specifically, then, then let's do it. I am very interested to see if there is wiggle room to amend further. I am very interested to see if there is wiggle room to, to amend further, um, if there is a way to separate out different civil service employees. If there's not, then, um, I'm still going to be in favor of this, uh, amendment, but, uh, that would be something that I would also, um, be in alignment with Alderman Gripp in just kind of checking out and investigating. And I think I asked some of those questions earlier, and maybe got some answers, but maybe we'll get more later on. Um, and then lastly, kind of speaking to that kind of protectionist view, you know, I look at other professions and within our school district, per se. And we have many teachers that teach in our, in our Davenport schools and do not reside in Davenport, do not reside in the state of Iowa. Um, I know of some professionals that work for, uh, the school district whose children don't even attend Davenport schools. And so, you know, uh, kind of, kind of suss that out a little bit as well, and, and maybe trying to be a little bit more open-minded when thinking about this as well and being in favor of this. So, thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
Thank you. Mayor Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. Um, so I too have, uh, evolved, I guess, over this. Um, years ago, I used to, with some of my colleagues, um, if you worked for Davenport, you used to live in Davenport. I don't necessarily disagree with that still, but, uh, having the understanding that there is a need to, um, help, uh, folks come work for us. Um, I also believe, um, spending my time in the city, um, and working for city government, uh, when we recruit, when we look for talent, when we, uh, decide on who should do what, especially in our public service, I believe we're looking for maturity, we're looking for decision-making, we're looking for commitment to service, and we have that. And I don't think that the, where you live necessarily is the consideration of whether you should be a police officer, firefighter, or quite frankly, anywhere else. Um, I wish there was a way to, uh, incentivize, because there is precedent for it. We have Home Base Iowa, we have other programs, uh, where we give incentives to veterans, for example, and I totally support this and think it's wonderful, that, for example, in Scott County, if you are a veteran and move to Scott County, uh, you get fifteen hundred dollars, and you get other benefits, and then if you add on to Scott County and live in Davenport, you get another fifteen hundred dollars. So, I think Alderman McGinnis's idea of, of looking at that, I, I would totally support an effort to discuss that and, and, and have an incentive for living in Davenport. Having said that, I think we should take the boundary to twenty-five, but the discussion is twenty, and that's a good, uh, way to look at it now, especially since it's from the corporate limits, but we'll want to see how this is, and I know I've talked with the city ministry to see how this develops, how this works, how this is, how this gets folks to, uh, come and, and work for us. If, if this is a great thing, then, then so be it, and I hope it is, uh, because they've, there's many people that feel it will. So, I'm, I'm supportive of it, um, but maybe we can look at, if you live here, that means something. So, I appreciate you letting me speak, and I am involved, and I, I ask my colleagues to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number three will remain on discussion. Item number four, resolution approving fiscal year 2023 maximum property tax levy rate in amount. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from counsel? That item will move on. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the United States Army Donations Program for the conditionally issued condemned or obsolete Army equipment for static display purposes. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step to the lectern.
Bill Handel, Nashville, Tennessee, also.
Thank you.
Ward four in Davenport. There's a new one on me. I didn't, don't know what, uh, his intent, and I, of course, support our armed services and anything that we done, could be done to, uh, improve recruitment. I think it's a good thing. Um, I was, uh, uh, you know, when I saw that it was to be static items, I was, I was, uh, not usable items, I thought that was a good thing. At first, I thought this was obsolete Army equipment going to be given to the police department, which has been done in some jurisdictions. So, what I saw was the Army, and it was to be static displays, a good thing, because, uh, had it been the Air Force, although it would be nice to have an old B-2 bomber in Fejervary Park, I don't think that's going to be the case. And it's not the, uh, Navy, I guess we can anticipate a aircraft carrier on the Mississippi. But in any event, um, I don't know what, uh, I guess it's a tank or something like that, it, um, that would be donated. I don't know if, if that's going to be put in a playground or not. I, I really question, given the people in the city, if it's something we really, we really want to see. And, uh, obviously, I, I respect the judgment of counsel, and I don't think you're going to do anything too out of the ordinary or outrageous, but, uh, just wanted, that when you do, do this, if you do it, uh, you do it, uh, thoughtfully. Thanks so much.
Anyone else from the public wishing to address this item? Uh, going to the counsel, Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Yeah, so I just wanted to, to speak in support of this. I know that, uh, the Friends of Veterans Memorial Park has been looking at this for a long time, and I'm glad that we're taking action to support them. Uh, when you talk about space activation in Veterans Memorial Park, uh, to me, it's, it's a park that you have to activate and try to drive people to, and having these static displays is one of those, especially because the, the greatest display of, uh, these static Army relics is on the Arsenal Island, and since, um, security protocol, you used to be able to drive on the island and, and go visit that. Now, it's much more difficult, and I can tell you, a lot less people do it. Um, so I think it, I think it is going to be, uh, very beneficial for Veterans Memorial Park, and I wanted to, to thank the mayor for the work he's done on this, because I know he's been driving it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor, for, uh, opportunity to speak. I too am in support of this. I really do hope that, uh, um, we go forward, and, uh, my hope is, as the gentleman stated, that we do keep safety in mind of our, um, residents and visitors from outside the, the city and state, but if we are going to do it, I, I really do hope we go big. So, don't, don't shoot low. Let's go for something that's really eye-popping and that people will talk about, and, uh, that we could be proud to have it in Veterans Memorial. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'd like to build on what Mr. Handel said, whatever we, and what Alderman Gripp said. Um, whatever we choose to get, I'd like it all to be placed in some, uh, context-sensitive way, so we're not just putting military stuff in different places in the city, but put it in places where it would be meaningful, and not just as a, you know, a playground-type thing for kids to climb on, but something that would be meaningful. Thank you.
Alderman Cornet.
I just would like to bring up, anytime that you get, uh, items from the Army, Navy, Air Force, they may have some components that, uh, may have to be removed, and the city should be diligent on making sure that those items are removed. Some of them are radioactive, some of them are carcinogenic, so we just want to make sure that what we get is ready for people to touch and enjoy.
Thank you. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. I, I think this is a great idea. You know, we've had a tank down at Credit Island as long as I can remember, and I don't know too many kids in the city of Davenport that haven't climbed or played on it. They used to play inside, and now they've got it welded shut, but, uh, it's a M-103 tank, and there's only like seven or eight of them left in the country. So, I think this is a great idea, and I will support it.
Thank you. Alderman Mattson. I'm sorry. Mayor Mattson.
Thanks for the promotion. So, um, I just want to thank the Parks Department, Mr. Dyson, and, uh, Bill Churchill and the friends, um, who have been pushing this for a bit. We discussed this when we first talked about, uh, Veterans Memorial Park and where it was going to go, and we've been working it a while, and we know government takes a bit to do things, um, but I, I believe the intent, and Mr. Dyson certainly corrected me, is to keep most, the stuff we, at Veterans Memorial Park. Uh, we're not, if it was up to me, we'd take the USS Iowa from California and run it up the Mississippi, and we'd place it here, but that's probably outside of our ability to do that, right? Uh, no, Mr. Handel, we're not putting, you know, B-52 in Fejervary, but we are trying to get some items to enhance Veterans Memorial Park, and this is a good program that has worked throughout the world, quite frankly, in the United States, uh, and brings attention to some of the things, um, as, uh, uh, some of the military facilities that I've been on. It's hard to see some of these things sometimes, and the, and the access is hard. So, um, we'll see what we get. Uh, we are certainly conscious of everybody that, what you've said about all the different particulars to this, um, and we'll, we'll be certainly, uh, smart about it and make sure it's safe. Of course, we would, uh, do that, but, uh, just to add to the attention, uh, to some things, so unless, Mr. Dyson, you can yell at me or whatever, but I think that's the intent, right? Roger that thing. Thank you for letting me speak.
Certainly. Item will move on. Item number six is, uh, is a resolution approving the purchase of a 2022 John Deere Model seven forty-four L wheel loader from Martin Equipment of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, five-hundred dollars, using Sourcewell Contract number zero-three-two-one-one-nine-jdc, uh, CIP number two-four-zero-three-one. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from counsel? Uh, and finally, item number seven is a resolution adopting the internal revenue service mileage rate to reimburse employees for use of a personal vehicle for city business. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from counsel? Uh, next, we have purchases from ten thousand to fifty thousand. I don't read each of those out loud, even though there's only one. I'm not going to read it. Alderman Cornet, would you please set our agenda?
I moved that all items, except item three, be placed on the consent agenda for approval.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
On number one, because of suspension.
Oh, yes, please. So, I recommend we'll keep number one and three on discussion?
Yes.
And all other items will be on consent?
Consent, yes.
Great. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes Finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. Uh, the next area is, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for this evening. The next area, is there any public with business? So, if someone has public to talk about, other than what's been already discussed on the agenda, please come to the podium, uh, give your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address us as a body, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Dale Gilmore, and I live at the Sixth Ward. Well, they did it again. Remember last week when I mentioned that if you tell somebody a lie often enough, they'll eventually believe it? Well, in last Sunday's Quad City Times, the caption below the picture reads, and I quote, "The city of Davenport is working toward making Third and Fourth Streets two-way in fiscal year 2024," end quote. And do you remember last week when I quoted Will Rogers, who said, "People who don't read the paper are uninformed, and people who do read the paper are misinformed"? Truer words were never spoken. So, many, if not most, of the people who get their information from the paper believe this is a done deal, and the DDP will have another chance on February twenty-second to put on another twenty-minute dog and pony show extolling the virtues of converting Third and Fourth Street to two ways, while us and the general public, who will be paying for it, are limited to five minutes per week. That's fine with me. I can make, I, I can point out the errors of their study and present the actual facts in five-minute segments, no problem. Next week, I'll begin with this page from their study. I, I, I believe it's page number three. I don't know how many of their five points I, I will be able to cover next week, but there will always, uh, but there will always be time the week after that, the week after that, and the week after that. I don't really care how long it takes to separate their propaganda from the actual facts. I'm really looking forward to this opportunity. It kind of reminds me of the old saying, "My mind is made up. Don't try to confuse me by using the facts."
Thank you. Anyone else?
Phil Handel, Nashville, Tennessee, also. Ward four in Davenport. Um, thanks for the opportunity to talk tonight. I'll be talking about the same thing as Mr. Gilmore. I've got a little different take on it. Um, the, I have to thank the, uh, Downtown Davenport Partnership for bringing this issue up, the Third and the Fourth Street, uh, conversion, which is something, I guess, has been talked about perhaps fifteen years or more, even, maybe even more than that, maybe when some of you were just children, I think, in, on council, but, um, the, uh, because it's something that I think needs to be, uh, discussed, because we're a different city than we were in nineteen fifty-four or five, whenever the one-ways were put in. I, I was looking at some, I may have mentioned this in the past, looking at an old archival, uh, photo of Downtown Davenport, which on River Drive in front of what was an auditorium, the old swimming pool, which is where the figgy is now, north of that, but, uh, six lanes of River Drive at that point, and the reason we had six lanes? Lots of traffic. We had factories on French Hacked, and we had Oscar Meyer, we had Blackhawk Founder, we had a number of factories against the riverfront, and when those people went and, uh, returned from work, um, they needed, uh, needed, uh, something to drive on that was, uh, efficient, and the Third and Fourth Street conversion did it. But, um, and, but now, we don't have that issue. The traffic counts are way down from what they were. We've got four lanes, so it's an opportunity. If you want to go fast, there's four lanes, you just don't have to wait behind anybody, just get, it's just like, becomes like the Kentucky Derby. Everybody's lining up at that stoplight, and they hit the gas as fast as they can. That's not the way that we should have our city, I don't think. But, um, as much as I agree with their, uh, their, uh, diagnosis, I, I disagree with the cure. Portland, Oregon is, uh, considered by the strong town advocates as one of the most beautiful and livable of the U.S. cities, and, uh, Joe Holland and I visited it two years ago, and I, I have to agree. It's downtown, downtown, however, uh, is not two-way streets, it's almost exclusively one-way streets, and by state law, the speed limit on those one-way streets is twenty miles per hour, very safe. I think most Davenport residents would agree that our one-ways are overly wide and encourage excessive speeding, but I think many are skeptical of the proposed solution. Instead, how about considering putting the one-ways on a diet with two lanes of traffic each direction instead of four? Two lanes of traffic rather than four. That would leave room for decorative lighting and large new planters on each side of the street, uh, which, of course, Downtown Partnership is really good on, on maintaining planters, I think it'd be a very pretty thing and be an attractive thing, and I think this modest change could be mocked up at very little cost for very little time. I'd suggest, but, on Third Street between, between, uh, Harrison and, and, uh, and Brady, that's two blocks, so we could mock it up and, uh, try it for about, uh, three, uh, three months or so, perhaps this summer, and if it meets with approval, or even if it doesn't, we, we know where we stand, uh, and I predict it would transform Third and Fourth Streets as it would be implemented block by block, uh, greatly and for the better. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm here to talk about Will Shorty, too. Uh, some of y'all may not know he got banned from this building here, also.
I apologize, sir. What's your name?
My name is Maurice Hughes.
Thank you.
I live in five-one West Third Street.
Thank you.
But, uh, anyway, uh, I'm talking about Will Shorty. Uh, he got banned from here, and also, uh, a lot of y'all don't know he has heart problems, and also asthma. He got kicked out of the apartment here when he came over asking for, asking for help over here, never received it. They kicked him out of the apartment, uh, right before Christmas. Now, the man is homeless with heart problems and home, and, uh, and, uh, asthma. Even though y'all have sent people to talk to him and ask him, "Do you want something better?", no help came his way. We asked for help, no help for it all, no help for him at all, no help for nobody in the heritage building still. I don't know what's going on, man, but, uh, I don't like to thank all y'all for nothing, and let y'all know, I'm trying to move out of the state of, I'm Davenport, Iowa. I'm federal with Iowa. Y'all would discuss me with Iowa, and Mr. Shorty is too, so therefore, that's all I want to say to y'all. Good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, no.
Okay. Seeing no one, is there any more reports to City Ministry? No. I'll accept a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Have a good evening. Be safe. Stay warm.